Please come to order. The 2016 Annual Town Meeting is now back in session. Thank you all for coming. Without any further ado, I think we will go to a couple of articles where the call was withdrawn. Let's see. Mr. Collier withdrew his call on 93, but someone else has stepped into his place. And on Article 94, Mr. Collier has withdrawn his call on Article 94, Long-Term Lease Authorization 10 Sun Island Road. Is there anyone here who would like to be heard on Article 94? Okay. So when we get there, we'll just vote it in accordance with its motion as printed in the warrant unless we have other ones to lump in with it. So we will start our festivities tonight with Article 70. Article 70 appears on Page 138 and 139 of the warrant. While we get settled, I wanted to make an announcement. I think you probably all have heard that longtime resident and attorney, former state representative Bob Mooney passed away today at 85. It's an enormous loss to the community. I know much will be said about Bob in the coming weeks and months, but suffice it to say, his loss is one that will be felt for a long time, both in the legal community and the community at large, and with his family, and our thoughts go to them. So Article 70. It's really long, so I'd like your unanimous consent to waive the reading. Thank you. I'll recognize Mr. Kelly, Chair of the Finance Committee, for the purpose of making the Finance Committee's motion.
So move, Madam Moderator.
Is there a second? Thank you. Motion is made and seconded. Anyone can yell out "second" at any point and save me from that embarrassing silence. This article was called by Mr. Atley, and I will go to him. If you want to just come up, you can actually grab a microphone up front, or you can take the microphone from Ms. Flanagan. There you go.
Madam? Moderator, thank you for hearing me this evening. And without my notes, I'm screwed. There we are. Yes. One of my strong feelings about this--
I think you're going to have to--
Okay. One of my stronger feelings about this article is the way it's been written, and the use of "shall" is used all over the place in here. And as all you attorneys know, "shall" means mandatory. No wiggle room, no arbitration, no nothing. It's mandatory. It upsets me when I read through here, "we shall fine." "We shall fine if the fine's not paid." "We shall fine." I mean, there's no room. Also, there's no room for arbitration. If there's a complaint filed against you, it's just the way it is. You're complained against. You can't argue whether the complaint has merit or not. But again, it's the way it's written. And I will just draw a parallel. You live on the island year-round. You happen to own a Rottweiler. Rottweilers bothering nobody until the summer person rents the house next door, and they're scared to death of Rottweilers just because they are. And they start to complain. And you have no recourse. You get fined for their complaint. And depending on what the complaint is, it could go all the way through being fined three, four, or five times, to where the animal is taken away from you and is subject to possibility possibility of being euthanized. It's just, I see this as a bad, bad thing. It is leaning where the year-round residents on this island are subject to more-- being penalized more so. You have 10,000 people here all year-round. In the wintertime, in the summertime, you get 50,000 people in. And there's no way to really monitor those 50,000 people. So it's the-- it has a bias of its own. You know, I just, I can't support it. And I hope others do not support it also.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. McNabb? Or Dr. McNabb, I think I should say.
Okay. I'm speaking as Chairman of the Board of Health. We reviewed this article, and we support it as written. You do have opportunities. If you think you've been unfairly fined or sanctioned, you can always make a complaint to the Board of Health, and we will review it. In the wisdom of the state, this type of activity is under the jurisdiction of the Board of Health. And we'd be glad to listen to anyone that feels they were unfairly treated.
Thank you. Yes, the first section-- yes, Ms. Cartunin? If you could wait for a microphone? I'm sure there's one coming. And please identify yourself for the record. It's on. It sounded like it was on there for a second.
Okay. Wonderful. Madam Moderator, just a request for clarification. It says, "if medical aid is requested"-- this is an "H"-- "if medical aid is requested and the owner does not seek medical aid for the animal." Should this read, "if medical aid is required and the owner does not seek medical aid?"
I will try to get an answer to that for you. And while I do that, I'll go to Mr. DeCosta.
I just have one question on this. In Section F under nuisances, it said, "No person shall keep within the limits of the town of Nantucket any dog or pet by which barking-- barking, biting, howling, or whining in any manner disturbs the peace and quiet of any person." Who's going to decide how many times my dog has to bark in a row before it disturbs somebody's peace and quiet? Is one bark, three barks, five barks? I mean, I have two black labs, and I have an invisible fence of my property, and my dogs don't leave the yard. But they do bark at things, and I don't want somebody walking down the street going, "Hey, your dogs are barking." You know, you've got to put a muzzle on them. So, you know, I understand the reason for this, but I think it's a little bit extreme. And I guess I'm going to get on my soapbox for two seconds here, why I'm here. Every time I turn around, we're talking about dogs, dogs, this, that, screeching birds. We don't say a word about feral cats. They're running wild all over the island. They've decimated the wild bird population here. There used to be pheasants all over this island. You don't see a pheasant anywhere anymore. Everybody loves the feral cats, but God forbid a dog's walking down the street that isn't on a leash. You're going to get arrested for it, so-- All right. I got my two cents in about the cats. I'm done.
Thank you. Okay. I just had a quick chat with Town Council. And by the way, John Giorgio, who was here with us on Saturday, had another town meeting he had to go to today. So Lauren Goldberg is now with us from Copeland and Page, and I've spoken with her about Ms. Cartunin's question about the word "requested." And she suggests that we add after that, "by the animal control officer or any police officer of the town." That's an "H," where it says, "and/or if medical aid is requested." By the animal control officer or any police officer of the town with a capital T. Mr. Kelly, would the Finance Committee accept that as a friendly amendment to its motion?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Okay. So, yes, over here. And please identify yourself.
I am Suzanne Gale. I'm the one that came up with some of these bylaws to help our community and our town with some of the animal issues that we're having. As for the animal nuisance, this is your dog nuisance bylaw as it stands right now. All that wording in there is what is there now. The only thing I added was "pet," and the "no person shall own or keep in the town a bird or fowl screeching or crowing." Everything else is already on the books. It's already there. If people have an issue with the "shall," we could change it to "may" if that makes people better. The animal negligence, basically, we're having issues with people leaving dogs in the car or animals in a container of some type, and they don't have adequate air, water, and leaving them there. That is a cruelty to animals. Technically, that's a arrestable offense. Now, if Grandma Smith left her dog in there for a few minutes, and she just did it by accident or forgot, I don't want to-- we don't want to arrest her, but we can write her a fine to make sure that it doesn't happen again. And if it does, then there's issues that we need to look into. Any animals or pets leaving the shelter requires that they-- the owners-- if you own an animal, you should be responsible enough to bring up and make sure the animal has its rabies shots. For the shelter issue, it's a volunteer facility, and most places, you would not get your animal unless you showed proof of rabies of that animal. Or if it didn't have a proof of rabies, you could go over to the animal hospital and get the shot that's required. Because where we live, we allow the animals to leave. And if anything should happen, if that animal happens to bite somebody within the shelter or another animal, and that animal gets sick, we do not have proof, and they're liable. And the town could be liable because the town has a contract with the shelter to keep these animals there. So I think it's-- instead of your animal control or your officers or the shelter running around to try to find the owner of these animals and making sure they're up to their rabies, the owner should be more responsible and bring that rabies certificate up there. Livestock does not go up to the shelter, so-- don't ask me about horses, cattle, or dog. You know, it's basically any mammal that's considered a small pet that can fit in the shelter is required that it should have its rabies shots, no matter what the state states. That's just more of a health regulation. And then for the town bylaw of registering your animals, livestock or farm animals, at right now, we do have a town permit, a $5 permit, no one seems to get. And the problem is, when we have a, say, a fire or medical issue with some of these animals, I can't-- we cannot locate these animals because we don't have a list of where they are. So I'm just trying to get people to register their animals because, right now, our shelter can't take chickens, ducks, geese. And we're getting more and more complaints of these animals wandering around because they're not properly fenced in. So what I'm trying to do is get people more to register their animals so we know where these animals are in case we need to find out. Right now, we have a problem with the bird flu. The state want a requirement of who owns chickens here on the island. We cannot give them that because we don't know where they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to come to you because-- now, you're not a voter, but you're affected because of the animals you own, correct? Okay. And if you could state your name for the record.
Madam Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time. Regarding Section F--
If you could identify yourself for the record--
Oh, I'm sorry. Tracy Pattenden.
Okay. Thank you.
You did say that? Regarding Section F, there is lots of existing state and town and Nantucket nuisance law. Article 70 is in conflict with town regulations, Chapter 55 and subchapter-- excuse me, Chapter 55, Subchapter 55.3, and multiple state laws, and does not allow for the reasonable keeping of animals. The keeping of pets is what is used here. Pet is a domesticated animal by definition, and that leaves every animal that we cherish here on island. There is no arbitration except in favor of the complainant. Therefore, this is unbalanced. In my particular situation, horseback riding has inherent risks and laws to protect it. But with Article 70, I could be riding my horse on my own property and be endangered above and beyond equine risks. A loose dog could attack, and not by my choice, I leave the seat of my saddle. The offending dog could chase the horse beyond the confines of my property, creating the third paragraph of Section F scenario, property damage. Property damage here does not cite the specific violations, penalties, or quarantine. I don't know what I'm up against. Damages are why we buy insurance, car insurance, home insurance. Furthermore, property can be fixed. Therefore, the town having permission to remove your animal or euthanize is extreme and unreasonable.
If you could wrap up, please.
I'm sorry?
If you could wrap up your remarks.
Yes. Under Section H, Animal Neglect seeks to overwrite Chapter 22, Section 77 of the Massachusetts General Law. Section J only applies to year-round residents and fails to address fines for summer residence visitors, thereby creating a class distinction. I know this island be very pet-friendly. I derive my income from this island as a pet sitter and owning other animals. I find Section 70 very disturbing, and I'm shocked that such a one-sided article seeks to enjoin all animals. Animal owners are not villains. Furthermore, it seeks to overwrite multiple Massachusetts general laws and to punish many because of the actions of a few. It's not without merit, and they may have good intentions, but there's an adage of that old road paved with good intentions. Therefore, ladies and gentlemen, please, please, do not pass Article 70 for the sake of our beloved animals, pets, and on our beloved island.
Yes, Ms. Burns?
I would like to ask whether or not Article 70, which is up for grabs now, is consistent with the farming article that was passed on Saturday, where it says, "A farm"-- I know it has to be two acres or more-- "permits the growing and harvesting of forest products and so forth, raising of livestock, including horses, keeping of horses as a commercial enterprise, and keeping and raising of poultry, swine, cattle, rattites such as emus, ostriches, and rias, and camelage such as llamas and camels, and other domesticated animals for food and other agricultural purposes, including bees and fur-bearing animals." Now, we passed that on Saturday, saying it's okay to have that on a two-acre farm, commercial farm. And so I guess my question is, are these compatible articles?
We had an opinion from Town Council, who looked at both 65 and 70, and the opinion that he gave was that they are consistent. Article 65 relates primarily to commercial, while 70 is focused primarily on personal pets and keeping of animals for personal uses. Okay. On Article 70.
I'd like to get clarification on how much of this article currently exists in the law, because in one of the areas, it says it's inserting new sections, but one of the previous speakers who worked on writing this said that this is already there, except for the word "pet." And I think it's important for us to know what we already have on the books as we look
Suzanne Gale again. The nuisance bylaw, just the nuisance, F, is what we already have on the books. This deals with your dog and dog only. Like I said, all that was added to this bylaw that exists is the word "pet," and "no person shall own or keep a bird or fowl." Commercial farming is not part of this bylaw. You have a right as a commercial farmer to have these animals. This bylaw would not affect that. This only affects those people that have animals, like a hobby farm. They have a small-- they just want a couple of chickens in their backyard, but they're not penned properly. This would help officers and the animal control officer to go there to say, "All right, you need to change this, this, and this," before it goes before the selectmen or before a judge saying, "You need to get rid of the animals." We can-- the officers will be able to help you, tell you what things could be changed and what we consider if this is a nuisance, or is this something going on between two neighbors. You'd still have the right to go before your selectman or a judge before that decision is made. Officers and animal control officers do not have the right to take animals away, nor are we going to put animals down before doing that. Thank you.
Okay. Let me shed just a little additional light on this for you. So we currently have a bylaw provision called-- it's Chapter 55, Animals. Section 1 is authority. Section 2 is purpose. Section 3 is enforcement, which gives enforcement power to the animal control officer and police department. Section 55.4 is the regulations for annual licenses and rabies vaccines. C deals with fees. D is the leash law. E is impounding. And then we get to F. What we're doing here is we're deleting existing F in its entirety and replacing it with the new language that's here printed on the screen and in the warrant. But I will read what F currently says, just so you know. It says, "Nuisances. No person shall keep within the limits of the town a dog, which by barking, howling, being found to run at large beyond the confines of the property of the owner or keeper, commits a nuisance, disturbs the peace and quiet of any neighborhood, or endangers the safety of any person. The owner of any dog, which endangers the safety of any person or other animal by biting, shall be subject to immediate violations and penalties. Any dog found to run at large beyond the confines of the property of the owner or keeper after the third offense of 54.4D, which is the leash law, shall also be subject to nuisance violations and penalties thereafter." So instead of that language, we have what's printed in the bylaw, what's printed in the warrant and on the screen. Then Section G deals with hunting dogs. And now we're adding these new sections, H, I, and J, with the friendly amendment that we made just a little while ago. Okay. So anything further on-- yes, the gentleman up in the back section, if you could just stand up. Someone will get you a microphone. Please be sure when using the microphones-- and I should do the same thing-- be sure to keep it close and point towards your mouth.
My name is Dallas Kirk at 30 India Street. I must confess that I'm a dog owner. And my concern with the Section F on this bylaw is that every delivery person in the town is going to start coming around and suggesting that we remove all the dogs because they bark when a package is thrown over the fence or dropped on the porch. I think most people who live year-round can deal with that kind of interruption, but I worry about a lot of our visitors over the summer who comfort, peace, and quiet, and all of a sudden, there's a dog next door that's disturbing their 10 o'clock in the morning wake-up. So I strongly urge that we defeat this warrant article.
Thank you.
Again, I do not work for the town of Nantucket, but I'm amazed at how much follows you around. These regulations that you see, particularly the nuisance portion, I sincerely believe I had a great deal in writing that regulation. And yes, dogs have always been in there, but it's not dogs that became an issue over the last year and a half. A little bit of history here. We found ourselves in many situations where complaints were coming into our office from a residential neighborhood, houses 10, 20, and 30 feet apart. It's okay to be waken up at 6 o'clock in the morning by something you can control next to your bed. Waking up by something very loud at 5 o'clock in the morning from something two lots over is not something you can deal with usually. And this is what prompted a great deal of change in this regulation. We got a lot of roosters around here now in residential neighborhoods, and they are indeed, to some people, a wonderful pet, but to others, an annoyance and a nuisance, particularly early in the morning and late in the evening. Attempts to have owners create blacked-out houses with tar paper was moderately successful if the owner wanted to cooperate. We had no requirement for that. This regulation is going to enforce some of what we're saying. I also want you to understand that the enforcement officers are relatively intelligent, rational people, and they will deal with this in an appropriate manner.
Thank you.
I would just like to repeat a lot of what Mr. Ray said. And for people who are concerned, I think-- I would like to think the Board of Selectmen are reasonable people, and the animal control officer is a reasonable person, and the Board of Health, I think, hopefully, is a reasonable board. And these complaints and issues, we will deal with in a reasonable way. This is essentially the same as Article 51, which is-- I was going to say "old," but I don't want to suggest that Mr. Ray is old. The issue here-- the real addition here is fowl and roosters. And as I said to someone, I did not want this meeting where we're talking about important things like septic systems that turn into a meeting where we're talking about roosters. And this is an emotional issue for a lot of people. We had three hearings on the subject of alternative-designed septic systems, and I think one person showed up. We had a hearing on changing Article 55 for roosters, and we had about 150 people show up. I think this is a reasonable article. It doesn't expand more than what we always have. It's essentially adding fowl and birds, and we need to have a way to regulate that. Without this, we can't. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wheatley?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Nancy Wheatley, Six Rights Landing. I have a question, and I'd like to respond after that. I'd like to know if "pet" is defined anywhere in the code.
We're doing a bit of a search.
I--
Yeah. I think not, but hang on, and we'll--
Well, let me just make my comment--
Yeah. So make your point.
I think there's-- I think there's a lot-- there's some issues which have been brought up by this article. I'm somewhat concerned to hear that Section F was actually amended, and we got it as something that was new. So I have a little bit of a problem-- So I have a little bit of a problem with, you know, with being able to understand this. And I would suggest that...
Well, you didn't get it as, I mean, it's very clear here in the pre-empt move that Chapter 55 is amended by deleting subsection F, nuisances of Section 55-4, in its entirety and replacing it with the following.
Well, that's true. I mean, what's in there is correct, but there was, there was already something in there, so, but that's not, that's not the important point. What I think is that it has, there's some ambiguities in here, one of which is pets, and I think there's some good ideas, but I think it's worth going back and trying to tune it up a little bit, because there's obviously some people that have concerns about how it's going to be, you know, how strict it is and how it will be enforced. And if we, if we have pets, I can see the poor Board of Health having discussions about what a pet really is, because roosters, some people may say, well, the roosters aren't pets, but who knows? So I would suggest it needs some more work, and I would suggest that we vote it down and have it come back.
Okay. Edith Ray?
Edie Ray, My Comet Avenue. I do have pets. I'm hearing the concern about the word "shall," and I'm wondering if in certain sections, "shall" were changed to "may," it might be a little more palatable for people, but still allow the animal control officers to do their jobs. So I'm wondering if in paragraph 3 of F, the two "shall's" in that paragraph would be changed to "may," and in paragraph, in Section H, the "shall" that's in the last line of that section would be changed to "may," and in Section J, that word "shall" be changed to "may." Would that in any way impact the officers' ability to do their jobs and what repercussions there might be from that? I think this is a very sound and needed article, and I'm hoping that it may have a better chance to pass if "may" were substituted for "shall" in certain areas. Thank you.
Before I turn that into an amendment, Mrs. Ray, I'm just going to ask Town Council to make a comment, because I believe that it's always discretionary, so I'm not sure it's necessary to change it, but maybe Ms. Goldberg can...
Madam Moderator, through you. In fact, that is the case. A provision in a bylaw that says "shall be subject to a fine" creates the ability to levy the fine, but not the obligation to levy the fine. So whether to levy the fine is discretionary and would depend on the circumstances. Certainly, fines should be levied in a manner that's consistent and not based on improper standards, but for assuming improper standards, that's always discretionary.
So for us to know and to make it clear for all of us, the "shall's" that are in here are really sort of kind of maze. Is that correct?
That's essentially the case, yeah.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This is a citizen article, and you heard me earlier on Saturday talk about the importance of citizen articles and how much time and consideration the Finance Committee gives to them. Ms. Gail gave a very impassioned plea and testimony about this, basically telling stories about what it's like on the job and the concern she has and the questions that get raised. And really, as Dr. McNabb said, this is more about fowls and roosters and chickens than about anything else. And the Finance Committee felt strongly that this was, these changes were really necessary to assist the animal control officers, and it had the support of the Board of Health, which was also very telling to the Finance Committee.
Thank you. There's a woman who's had her hand up for a while in the front of the back section.
Hi, my name is Donna Hamel. I also own a pet, or two. I'm just, a question about the definition of the limits of the town of Nantucket. Are we talking about the entire island or just specific areas?
It's the entire town.
Entire island, okay. I also find this entire article to be very ambiguous. The fact that it was already on the books, I think we should table this thing as recommended and rework this so that it makes more sense. I understand the need. I just don't think it's something that everybody can comfortably live with and have people, you know, let's be honest, some people are just nasty human beings. They don't like anything about anybody and could use this to get back at somebody, so it's kind of a hard thing to be so subjective and un-objective about, so that's my opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Stover?
John Stover. I have a couple of questions. I'm not sure who can answer them, but first of all, with nuisances, the first paragraph seems to be talking an awful lot about noise. Why doesn't our noise ordinance cover this particular area? And two, we're talking about a dog that maybe bites somebody. I'll tell you, if my daughter's walking down the dirt, down the road, and she's with the dog, and the dog attacks a person who attacks her, yay. I don't care how many times the dog does it.
Thank you. Mr. Holland? Oh. Okay. So I think what Mr. Holland's saying is that we should go to a vote on this article. We're going to have a, it will require a two-thirds vote. Yeah? What's your point of order? That's not a point of order, thank you. We're going to go to a vote on the motion to move the question. That motion takes a two-thirds vote. If you vote yes, you're voting to end debate on Article 55. A no vote will keep discussion going on Article 55. I mean, 70. Chapter 55, it's Article 70. All those in favor of the motion to move the question, say aye. Those opposed, no. That motion carries unanimously. So now we're taking a vote on Article 70. It will be the Finance Committee's motion as printed in the warrant with the friendly amendment offered to Section H, which is now shown on the screen. A yes vote will adopt the motion, a no vote will defeat the motion. It does require a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. That motion is adopted. Okay. Hand count. Now, I just want you to know, I'm almost never wrong. On hand counts. I'm wrong most of the time on everything else, but on hand counts, I'm usually right. But since you all want a hand count, we will do a hand count, and if I'm wrong, I'll be eating my words. So all those in favor of the motion on Article 70, as printed in the warrant with the friendly amendment that was shown in yellow on the screen, please raise your hands and keep your hands raised till the tellers have had an opportunity to count your vote. While we're doing this, I do want to mention, I didn't have a chance to on Saturday, and I feel badly, mention that we are missing two very longtime Town Meeting members, Mort and Riva Slessinger, whose voices were always, well, Mort, in particular, always heard here. And we have their two seats where they always sat at every meeting, set aside, and unfortunately, Saturday, every time I went to mention them, someone had snuck into one or the other of the seats, and I just couldn't bring myself to talk about them then. So I just do want to mention that we've lost a lot of kind of longtime Town Meetinggoers, but Riva and Mort, as a couple, were particularly committed and powerful and interesting people, and their presence here is very, very, very much missed. I think Mort Slessinger was the only person who's ever been here who truly thought he didn't need a microphone and really didn't. So all those opposed to the motion on Article 70, please raise your hands and keep your hands raised while the tellers have an opportunity to count your vote. Oh, seriously? Article 70, yes, 235, no, 90. The motion is adopted. Okay. So as we head to Article 82, just for a brief moment, I want to, because we're going into housing here, I want to recognize Renee Sealy up in the back, who wants to just read something quickly. If someone could hand Renee a microphone, that would be great. She's way back up in there. Somebody's coming. You'll have like three microphones all of a sudden.
Thank you. Is it on? Great. My name's Renee Sealy, Director of the Nantucket Housing Authority, and I just want to read a short tribute to one of our existing Nantucket Housing Authority members. The Nantucket Housing Authority members and staff must regretfully announce the retirement of our longest-sitting elected member, Norman W. Shalecki. Norman was one of the leading and most influential founding members of the Authority established back in 1984. Norman has decided to step down and not run for reelection after having served on the Board of Commissioners for the past 32 consecutive years. He led the Authority's long and proud tradition of developing affordable housing for families and the elderly of low and moderate income under the most challenging of circumstances and where the competition for land cannot be any more contentious. He is also a founding member of NHA Properties, Inc., better known as Housing Nantucket, another one of his successful accomplishments to provide workforce housing. Fighting for affordable housing back in the 80s and 90s was a very lonely place, but Norm knew very early on, no matter how unpopular a cause it was, not to cower away from its unpopularity. He never said, "Let somebody else worry about it." After all, he says, you know, "After all, I have my house, and, you know, a lot of us just didn't worry about it." But Norm didn't do that, so he got accustomed, so we got accustomed to seeing Norm stand up and speak at many a Town Meeting with some solution in hand, whether small or large, and to always fight hard for what was and still is one of Nantucket's most critical and challenging problem to date. Affordable housing is the elephant in the room. We can all thank Norman for teaching us the power of political will, that when exercise can accomplish good things, and in Norm's world, can build homes for our children and retiring parents. Thank you, Norm, for your selfless dedication to this community, your generous heart, and your tireless effort to make Nantucket a better place. Norm's not with us right now, but I'm sure he's watching us on TV, so everybody look at the camera and give him a round of applause.
Thank you.
Thank you, Norm.
Okay. So now we'll go to Article 82. It starts on page 159, and it's really very long. It goes on and on and on and on. The motion starts on page 165, and it continues all the way to page 171, and I'm sure you will give me your unanimous consent to waive the reading of that particular motion. And I will recognize Mr. Kelly for the purpose of making the Finance Committee's motion as printed in the warrant.
So moved, Madam Moderator.
Is there a second? Okay. Motion is made and seconded. Now, I do have an amendment from Mr. DeCosta, and that amendment is to change 1% in Section 2 to 1 1/2%. Is that your motion, Mr. DeCosta? Thank you. Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. So on that amendment, Mr. DeCosta?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Board of Selectmen met earlier this evening before this board at 5:30 to discuss this, and we changed, we voted unanimously to change this percentage from 1 to 1 1/2 for a couple of reasons. One was that we feel for this to get through the State House, we need to have unanimous consent from as much of the town as possible, and hopefully this room tonight. This is going to meet some pushback at the state level from the Mass Realtors Association and other organizations of such. They don't like these types of taxes on sales of homes. We had, we had heard concerns from the Nantucket Builders Association and the Nantucket Real Estate Community about a full 1%. The original article was for 3/4% to go to housing and 1/4% to go to capital expenditures. We've eliminated the capital expenditures part from this article, so we felt that 1/2% was still a substantial amount of money for the housing bank and should have a better chance of getting through the state level, should this body decide to send it on.
Thank you. So on the amendment. I see no hands. This requires a majority vote. A yes vote will adopt the amendment, a no vote will defeat the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Those opposed, no. That motion is adopted. Now, on the main motion now on Article 82, as made by the Finance Committee, as amended by Mr. DeCosta, I'll go to you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. On Saturday, we spent a lot of time talking about not only sewers, but housing. It was really a theme throughout the conversation. When we were talking about zoning, we were talking about affordable housing. We, you also approved a pretty innovative way of addressing affordable or workforce housing with tiny houses. So this is, this is an opportunity to, this is another arrow in the quiver, if you will, as we look at how to improve workforce housing for year-round Nantucketers. The Finance Committee felt so strongly about this, and you already voted to support this, that we thought that getting this through the legislature was probably going to take a lot longer than we, than it should, so we recommended putting $1 million in Article 10, which would create some seed money for, for the Affordable Housing Trust to get started immediately, because the crisis is so dire. We also did a couple of things to create some more power, if you will, to Town Meeting. At some point, we hope, the housing crisis will be, will end, and so we put some term limits, if you will, on this article. This Home Rule petition will have a time, is for a period of 10 years. At the end of that time, it must have a majority vote of Town Meeting to renew for another five-year increment, and that will happen every five years. We also wanted to give Town Meeting to make a change at any time you see fit, so even during the course of any of those terms, the 10-year, the 5-year, or subsequent five years, with a 2/3 majority vote of Town Meeting, you could reduce the percent or you could abolish the, abolish the system. or you could abolish, abolish the system. We felt strongly that you should have those, those authorities. So we, as a committee, were very passionate about this, and we recommend your adoption of this motion, of this article.
Thank you. Mr. Vors.
Thank you. Andrew Vors, Director of Planning. I would ask that you support this article as now amended. I think that the town, I mean, a lot of our discussion here at this town meeting focused on housing, and I thank you all for the votes to increase that supply. I want to point out the fact that when we did recently conduct a questionnaire, and 1,400 of you responded, 77% of you feel that the town has to do something about housing, that we have to step forward and get something done. So I thank to FinCom and the Board of Selectmen for their support over the course of this discussion. There is a new, in addition to the victories, you know, the small victories that we've already had, and Renee Sealy certainly, to see new families move into Satcham's Path is a great day, which happened just recently. We have a new Affordable Housing Trust Fund. That's seven members. It's a very energetic group of new people. The Trust Fund is anxious to move forward and get something done as well. And just so you know, the Housing Trust Fund has, has basically underwritten the cost of a housing production plan that is underway, that will be released in the next six weeks or so. And some of the initial findings are quite sobering. When you think about the fact that what we've seen in terms of housing units, so there's a total of about 11,700 housing units on Nantucket. That's an estimate as of 2014. And during the period of 2010 to 2014, we actually lost rental units. So, and that means that they were converted to other uses. So we've lost over 330 rental units, is actually less units occupied by year-round households. So I think that helps understand where our, our housing problem continues, continues to get tighter. And it's also about not only rental households, but ownership households as well. And there's programs to help people stay in place, there's rehab programs and other things that the Trust looks forward to accomplishing. So again, thank you very much. I hope you support this.
Thank you. Yes, the woman in the back? Right, just stand up and, yes. Someone will get you a microphone. Please identify yourself.
Hi. Mary Bergman, 15 Anina Drive. And if you don't know where that is, that's because it's a new street, and it is in Satcham's Path. So I'm one of those people that Mr. Vors was just talking about. And the people in Satcham's Path are all year-round residents. They're all going to be in by June for this first phase, in the 80, 100, and 150% of the area median income. So we're from, you know, different walks of life. And I'm here to speak in favor of Article 82. I'm not a native, but I'm a member of the community. I work for a nonprofit, and I serve on a few cultural committees. My parents were, lived here, my grandparents lived here, and now that I can live here too, because of the work that has been done by this town meeting and previous town meetings. So I encourage you to support this, so that other community members could benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Borschert?
This question is for Mr. DeCosta. Is the capital improvements and sewer funding now out of this motion, or still in?
Out.
Has the motion been changed now on the screen to that effect?
It's changed in the Finance Committee motion. The title of the motion is just the, the title on the screen is just the title of the article itself. So it doesn't, the motion, Finance Committee motion, doesn't have any of that other language in it. Yes. Mr. Linval?
Hi there. Carl Linval, local real estate agent on the island. My biggest question going forward with this is, I, first of all, I support this, and I support the tax and what it does. The issue that I come up with is that a transfer of a property, we have essentially two fees for conflicting purposes. On one side, we have a land bank fee of 2%, asking us for money to buy up pieces of property for either conservation or public use purposes. I find that conflicting when we're asking for 1/2% for development. I would have, rather have seen money from the land bank be derived towards a different purpose. I feel that they've done a wonderful job, and we are now at 50% conservation on the island. We have Scotset Trust and Nantucket Conservation Trust, which also continue to buy up pieces of property for open space. So my main issue moving forward is, should we have two conflicting taxes on the same transfer? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
I'm the chairman of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and I'm been on the, I'm the next longest person on the Housing Authority, now that Norman's leaving us. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund met with the Land Bank Commissioners, what, a couple of months ago? Before we put the warrant articles in, and we had a long discussion about adjusting their fee, it's not a tax, it is a fee. It is considered a fee up at the state, not a tax. We have to use the proper language, because the minute you say tax up at the state, they run screaming for the hills. It's a fee. The land bank is 2% on the buyer, the 1 1/2% is on the seller, and over the $2 million. So if you sell a house for $3 million, you're paying the 1, the 0.5% on the $1 million, which is $5,000 per $3 million transaction. In the past, this town meeting has supported the massive amount of money that the CPC, I'm a member of, gave to Satcham's Path. It was through the CPC that Satcham's Path was able to get the infrastructure and underwrite a lot of that project, so it can be completed, and they are moving along very quickly. You've also supported other CPC funding every year, and you did it again this year, for Housing Nantucket, Habitat for Humanity, and other housing interests. We spent a lot of time last year talking about trying to get affordable housing. We spent a lot of time this year trying, talking about affordable housing. The land bank, as I said, was not in favor of adjusting their fee at the moment. We've done an awful lot supporting the land bank in purchasing open space and life rights to other things on the creeks that are going to be open space. We should spend something to provide affordable housing, or at least a financial base for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is a town entity, has a wide representation, to provide affordable housing and start affordable housing initiatives of all kinds. We cannot wait to adjust the land bank fee. It could be at some point in the future, they've done their job, we take a 0.5% away from the land bank and give the 0.5% back to what we originally had asked for, which is 1%. And that wasn't a willy-nilly figure. We had studied that for quite some time. I ask you to please support this article and let us get moving. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Kopko?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm sorry that we bumped this down from 1% to 1/2%. Having been to the State House and talked to the Mass Realtors Association on behalf of the town in the past, I'm trying to envision them going, "Oh, only 1/2%? Okay. That sounds like a great idea. Let's do that." Obviously, that's not going to happen, and they do consider it a tax up at the state. But this is way overdue. And I'm, I'd like to ask a question, Madam Moderator, through you two, maybe the planning folks. Do we have a number? Is there, do we have an idea of how much money this is going to generate on an annual basis, so we can have that information to work with while we vote? Thank you.
Mr. Holland?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Tucker Holland, Tucker Holland, independent housing consultant to the town. The land bank actually has been very helpful in the formulation of this article, and the numbers that they calculated based on the 10 trailing years. If we had the same real estate transaction over the next 10, this would generate $12.5 million during that period. If we looked just at, if we looked just at last year, it would have generated 1.85 million.
Is that at 1/2% or is that at 1%?
That is the number at 1/2%.
Thank you. Yes. Yeah, I'm recognizing you. Yes. Go ahead, stand up.
Just some questions. Exactly, how is this going to work? Is this going to work like the land bank?
If you could state your name.
Maria Zoda, 3 Dionis Beach Road. So that we're going to set up a Housing Authority, have an office, and are they going to do pretty much what Habitat Humanity does, what Community Preservation does, what our other nonprofit entities are doing in terms of affordable housing? How's the mechanics going to work?
Mr. Vors?
Thank you. So the question is, the funding will work to complement the other organizations similarly to the way the Housing Trust works now. For example, the Housing Trust purchased land at 7 Surfside Road, and that was then basically given to the Housing Nantucket Group, where then they worked to develop housing. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund also had provided a grant to Housing Nantucket to do rehab. So the Trust is there to work with the nonprofits. I see the role that would be complementary to these other groups, to help them achieve their goals and provide funding to advance what they wanted to do.
Thank you. Okay. So this motion requires a majority vote. A yes vote will adopt the motion. A no vote will defeat the motion. The motion that you're voting on is the Finance Committee's motion as printed in the warrant with the amendment made by Mr. DeCosta to change the percentage to 1 1/2%. All those in favor, please say aye.[1352.28][1352.28](APPLAUSE) Those opposed, no. That motion is adopted. Okay. So, Article 85. Article 85 is on page 176 of the warrant. The Finance Committee's recommendation is on page 177. It is slightly long, so I'd ask for your consent to waive the reading of that motion and recognize Mr. Kelly for the purpose of making the Finance Committee motion as printed in the warrant.
So moved, Madam Moderator.
Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Mr. Grous, this is your article, and I assume you would like to do some introductory remarks, and then I'll go to the person who called it.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening. My name is Joe Grous. I live at 5 Pinkham Circle. My wife and I have lived on Nantucket full-time since 2011, and we've owned our home here since 1984. After serving on the Capital Program Committee in 2014, I became a member of the Finance Committee in 2015. And I have submitted this Citizens article suggesting that the town charter be amended to change the position of Town Clerk from elected to appointed, based on my experiences as a member of both the Capcom and the Finance Committee, for basically three reasons. Number one, I think this change would allow the town of Nantucket to recruit the best possible talent for one of its executive positions. Nantucket hires its police chief, the fire chief, the town manager, head of DPW, et cetera, et cetera. Basically, every operating executive is hired, with the exception of the town clerk. Changing to an appointed town clerk would give the town the flexibility to recruit and hire from a broader pool of candidates for a role that requires increasing sophistication in law, regulation, and records management. Now, I should point out that this is not to say that our current, that our current town clerk is not qualified. She is very highly qualified. But when she retires, I think the town should have the flexibility to do a broad search for her successor. Second reason is improved efficiency and accountability. All of the town's executives, as I noted, except for the town clerk, are appointed. Having participated in the budget review process over the past two years as a FinCom member, I believe that the town's budgeting, administrative, and HR policies would all operate a lot more smoothly if the town clerk's office were a division of and reported to town administration. Number three, times do change. An elected town clerk is, in my view anyway, a holdover from colonial times. As noted by the Massachusetts Town Clerks Association, an increasing number of Massachusetts communities are switching to appointed town clerks. In 2013, there were 120 towns and cities with appointed town clerks, which is an increase of 41 towns, or 52% from 2007. Edgartown is a very good example. It changed to an appointed town clerk in 2014, and it was actually the town clerk, Wanda Williams, who endorsed this change in order to give the town the flexibility to conduct a broad search for her successor. Now, recent letters in the Enquirer and Mirror opposing this article cite several arguments including, against it, including "A reduction in our voting rights," "The assertion that elected town clerks answer to the people and are more responsive," are therefore more responsive, "And that appointed town clerks are somehow more vulnerable to patronage or other undue political influence." Personally, I don't find these positions, these positions all that persuasive, but on the issue of the elected town clerk being more responsive, I would like to point out that after running unopposed for nearly 20 years, answering to the people for the town clerk really means that she answers to no one. Reporting to the town manager would improve the accountability of the town clerk's office, not reduce it. Now, I would, just in closing, Nantucket's town clerk, Catherine Stover, has served in her position since 1998, and she and her staff do a fine job. They're experienced and well-qualified. This change would have little effect on her or her staff. No change in compensation or benefits, and their job functions would all stay the same. If history is any, any particular guide, Mrs. Stover is going to be re-elected for another three years in about a week. But if, oops. But if Article 85 passes, the town of Nantucket will have the flexibility at the end of her term to either extend her employment or to recruit, seek and recruit another town clerk. Thank you for your attention, Madam Moderator and all the guests, and I ask your support in voting for Article 85.
Thank you. Ms. Stover?
My lifelong hero, Abraham Lincoln, said, "Whatever you are, be a good one." 18 years ago, the late Flint Rannie suggested that I run for the office of town clerk. I'm very glad he did, because I have loved my job, and I have loved being of service to this community and to the people as a selected town clerk. I hope you believe that I have been a good one. Most of you may remember that inveterate philosopher Charlie Flanagan, my father, you will recall that he had many colorful sayings that he would trot out when the occasion arose. One of, one comes to mind tonight. "If it ain't broke, for God's sake, don't fix it."[1756.42][1756.42](APPLAUSE) Please, please, please.
Please, no clapping.
In my opinion, Article 85, no matter how well-intentioned, is an attempt to fix something on Nantucket that isn't broken. You may refer to the handout I provided to see the many ways an elected clerk serves our community. Mr. Grous asserts that changing from an elected clerk to an appointed clerk is now the trend in Massachusetts. He tells us that over 40 towns have made the change. What should be clarified about his statement is this: It is indeed a trend to try to make clerks appointed, but it is too soon to tell if that trend will be successful overall in the long run. And... And since when did Nantucket follow trends? We usually set them. You should also be told that more than 30 towns have decided not to change from elected to appointed clerks. It has been my observation in the last 18 years that the only times the efforts to change from an elected to appointed clerk were successful were during the municipalities' elevation from a town to a city, during the transition from a retiring clerk to a new clerk who perhaps didn't know any better, or when the clerk herself did not oppose the change. As in Wanda Williams' case, there was nobody else that wanted to step forward as clerk. Indeed, there were many towns that switched over, but there were two towns that switched back within a few years. So if we're going to talk numbers regarding trends, here is the number that speaks the truth. More than 2/3, more than 66% of the Commonwealth municipalities still elect their clerk. Not because they haven't thought about it, not because they haven't talked about it. They have, and they voted on it. They still choose to elect their clerks. Mr. Grousse believes that bringing someone from off-island to be your new clerk would be a great option for this town. First of all, there are only 20 other clerks in the entire Commonwealth who have my qualifications and experience. That means you're going to have to poach one from another town. The entire clerk network in Massachusetts, as well as that of New England, knows that Nantucket is the land of the $10 ice cream cone. Most likely, any other Mass. or New England clerk who might be enticed to come here to live will now know that they should be offered a starting salary in the neighborhood of However, per Mass. general law, an appointed clerk can live on the Cape and commute over every day. We've seen that before in other departmental hires. Naturally, there will be additional costs when the clerk must stay overnight the night before and after the election. Otherwise, how would things go if the votes don't go on Election Day? One other item your imported clerk will need to think about. What job security do they have if they might be replaced by the vote of three out of five of the next batch of selectmen? In my opinion, a homegrown town clerk elected by a stable, longstanding base of several thousand voters is the best choice for a community like Nantucket. There is an emotional connection with the people that motivates the clerk to serve, sometimes above and beyond what is the job description. Lucky for us, we have such a person who is already in residence here, who is willing to serve when I retire. The lovely Nancy Sullivan Holmes, sitting right over here, already is a certified municipal clerk and has worked very hard to learn the inner workings of clerkdom. She is kind, friendly, and loves this community and this people as much as I do, and she is also way nicer than I am. In summary, I want to say that I am and always have been very happy to work with the people in front of the room, but I would also like to know, I'd like you to know, that I work for you. And I think that it's important that you stay in control of that little item. So, my hero also, my hero Lincoln also said, "America will never be destroyed from the outside. If we falter and lose our freedoms, it will be because we destroyed ourselves." I urge you to defeat this article and retain your power to elect your town clerk.
Thank you. Okay. So, on the motion, Mr. Claplin?
Madam Moderator, if you would like to question, please.
Oh. Well, let's see. That takes a 2/3 vote, so I'm going to take a vote on that because we haven't had a lot of debate, and so it's up to you. A motion to move the question will end debate on this article and will go directly to a vote. A no vote will defeat the motion to move the question and will continue with the discussion, and I can recognize some of the people have their hands up. So, all those in favor of moving the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Okay. So, that clearly is adopted by a declared 2/3 vote. So now, we will go directly to a vote on the motion on Article 85. A yes vote will adopt the motion. The motion is as printed in the warrant. A no vote will defeat that motion. All those in favor of the motion on Article 85, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Not really funny, but okay. The motion on Article 85 is not adopted. I do want to comment, though, that the clapping and the screaming is really not the kind of behavior that we're used to seeing at this meeting, and I really am urging you to comport yourselves in a manner that is maybe a little bit more community-friendly. Article 86 starts on page 177, continues to 178. The Finance Committee motion starts on 178, continues to 179. It's kind of long, so I'll ask for your unanimous consent in waiving the reading, and I'll recognize Mr. Kelly for the purpose of making the Finance Committee's motion.
So moved, Madam Moderator.
Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Okay. This was called by Mr. Saperstein? And there he is. If you would rise, Mr. Saperstein, we'll get you a microphone.
Madam Moderator, I called, but I'm in opposition. If you so elect, the proponent might wish to speak first.
I don't know that he does, because I think you do. Do you want to make your amendment first? I mean, I was going to try to get it out on the floor, but...
There's more to come.
Okay. How about I do this, then, Mr. Saperstein? I'll go to Mr. DeCosta. He has an amendment he wants to make. He can make his amendment, and then I'll come back to you, and you can say what you...
I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam.
Okay. That's fine. So, okay. So I do have an amendment from Mr. DeCosta as follows. We're inserting at the end of Article 86 the following language. Provided, however, that for purposes of implementing this charter amendment, the term shall be measured by looking back at the number of elected or appointed terms an official has served prior to the first election to be held at least 64 days after the effective date of this act. Is that your amendment?
Yes.
Okay. So, is there a second? Okay. Motion made and seconded. So now, on the amendment... See, this is the awkward part. So now, we're on the amendment only.
This amendment is to make this article retroactive if it were to pass this body and then pass at the State House. So, the first election that was held at least 64 days after the passage of the change would be, the terms would count back from that election. So if it was 2017, then it would be three consecutive terms back from 2017. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does to me. Okay. So, on the amendment only, any discussion? Ms. Williams?
I don't even know where to start with this. The proponent didn't even show up to meet the articles Mr. Saperstein did, and did an excellent job on representing the opposition, which is massive. The last couple of times this thing came up, we voted down, or the sentiment was not to put it through. I believe in an article last week, Town Council was quoted as saying, "It cannot be retroactive." I don't know how this came up. It was pretty clear from my discussion with Town Council earlier this week, which is not the Town Council that is sitting here at the moment, but the Town Council quoted in the newspaper that making these things retroactive was not allowed. This has a tremendous amount of unintended consequences, which we'll get into probably on the main motion, but I think this, again, is an attempt to get at long-serving members of multiple boards. He couldn't get at them before, but now this amendment allows him to get at people that have dedicated their lives to serving this town, the Concom, the Planning Board, the HDC, traffic safety, a myriad of groups, roads and rights of way, which Mr. Saperstein and Nat are on. There's so many problems with this, it's not funny. But you're throwing people out with the bathwater. You're telling them they can come back and run again the following year. For what purpose? In five years, you could very well end up with no historical knowledge, nothing, no experience on these boards that takes years to get up to speed. Just reading the subdivision control law will give you a headache. So this is just one other way of getting at people that are already on existing boards when he couldn't before, and I urge you to defeat this. I think it's a problem in search of a solution in search of a problem. We have, just to give you an idea, we have, on the HDC alone, out of eight members, five new members over the last year and a half. The Planning Board is gaining two out of five, probably three out of five with a new alternate. CPC has a lot of new members. I believe the Affordable Housing Trust Fund we mentioned earlier, out of seven, there are six new members. So when they try to give you this rigmarole about not having any new blood, the school committee has a lot of new blood, it affects so many people, it's not funny. The only ones, really, that are exempt are the Housing Authority, because that's state and federal, and the land bank. And there's new blood on the land bank. So don't fall for this old saw that there isn't a lot of new blood coming out, because there is. And the HDC has always been one of those targeted boards, saying there's no new blood. There's five, and it's been great working with them, but they all are trying to get up to speed. So please defeat this.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator, Council is here, and she will make comment that it is a legal amendment.
Ms. Goldberg, do you want to...
Madam Moderator, through you. The, my understanding is, oh, sorry. Lauren Goldberg, Colton Page, Town Council. My understanding is that the intent of this draft that appears in your warrant book was, in fact, intended to be prospective, meaning that it would take effect upon its enactment, and it would both look back and look forward, and that the looking back would be to look at the number of consecutive terms. So this amendment is intended to clarify that, and so that there isn't any question about how it should be implemented.
Thank you. So, on the amendment only. Okay. This amendment... Oh, yes, Mr. Saperstein.
Madam Moderator, I defer to Council, but it was my understanding that in the traditions of the American Constitution, we didn't make illegal things in the past, and that I think it's much fairer, should the main motion pass, that it start tomorrow, not yesterday.
Thank you, Ms. Goldberg.
Madam Moderator, I wanted to just make two more points. Number one, under state law, the kind of the policy about elected terms is that what the legislature giveth, the legislature can taketh away, meaning that this legislative body has the ability to request that terms either be started or ended, or that they be limited. So there is nothing illegal about that, and many times, an appointed position is created from an elected one, and the term is actually cut short, and that isn't what this would do. And the second thing is that in order to ensure that something can be implemented clearly, and this has nothing to do with illegality, it's better to know ahead of time what the rule is. And there is nothing in state law that says that you can't look back to determine how a law should be implemented going forward. I don't think there's any issue with the legality of this proposed amendment.
Thank you. Ms. Gookin?
I'd like to know if this, because it has the word "elected," is this just boards and committees, or could this be the town clerk position or any other elected position?
It says farther in the article, but it's a multi-member elected or appointed board, so it doesn't cover the town clerk, it doesn't cover the moderator. It covers the appointed boards by the Board of Selectmen and the elected boards of the town, and only the town, not commission boards, not state boards. So it wouldn't cover the MP and the DC, it wouldn't cover the land bank, it wouldn't cover the Housing Authority. I don't know if there's any others that I've missed.
Okay. So on the amendment only, this amendment requires a majority vote. A yes vote will adopt the amendment. A no vote will defeat the amendment. Don't pay any attention to the thing that says quantum of vote required for passage of the motion is 2/3. That's the main motion itself. The amendment, thank you. The amendment just requires a majority vote. So a yes vote will adopt the amendment, a no vote will defeat the amendment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
That amendment is not adopted. Okay. So now, we're on the main motion on Article 86 as printed in the warrant. Mr. DeCosta, did you have anything more you wanted to say?
Despite what some people might think, this article was, I put this in here not to single out any individual or any certain board. I firmly believe that good government has turnover. I think that's what's wrong with a lot of the government in this country. Nine years and 15 years is a long time to serve on a board. I've served on several nonprofit boards, and all of that, all the boards that I've served on have a term limit, either one or two terms, and then they have to take a year off before they can reapply to that board. I think the same thing should happen with government. There's a lot of good, quality, young people, talented young people in this town who do not want to run against an incumbent of a board who's been there for 15, or 20, or 30 years. So, now that the amendment doesn't pass, this, any given board with a three, any board with a three-year limit, this would not start until 2016, 2026, excuse me. And anyone on the Planning Board, it would be 15 years after next year. So what's that, 2032? 31, 32. So, I'll probably be dead and gone before this even takes effect if it were to pass, but I think we have to start somewhere. Seems to me that a lot of what our local government is, is run by the same people. And, you know, we need new, young, fresh ideas. So that's why I put this in here. I wasn't singling out any one board. It covers all boards elected and appointed.
Thank you.
Hey, Linda, I wasn't at the meeting because I happened to go off-island that Saturday, and since you only have it one time, I couldn't make it.
Okay. So, on, yes, the person up, is that you, Mr. Miller? If you could stand up? I'll come, I'll come over there, whoever's yelling at me.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Bruce Miller. I'd just like to say, I think Mr. DeCosta's on the right track here. This should not be about personalities. This is about good governance, and, you know, I've been participating in town government for almost 20 years. There's absolutely no doubt in my mind that the quality of our governance would be enhanced if we adopt this. It may take 10 years, as you just said, but it's very important. Any nonprofit that I know of has a term limit policy, no matter how important you are, no matter how much money you give... No matter how important you are, no matter how much money you give, after two terms, or some number of terms, you're out, and you sit out for one year, doesn't have to be more than that, and then you can come back. So the assertion that somebody leaving one of these boards would have to be out for three or five years is not true. They can come back the next election. And I think it's incredibly obvious to me that the point Mr. DeCosta made about people being discouraged from running for office, it really inhibits people out here from getting involved. The idea that you're going to go up against a five-time incumbent is so discouraging that most people simply don't do it. And therefore, the pool of people eligible or interested in participating gets smaller and smaller, the decision-making gets more and more incestuous, there's less and less fresh thinking, and it really, I think, makes it much more difficult for us to think progressively and make government vibrant. So I really encourage everybody to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. That's not a point of order, but thanks so much for bringing it to my attention. Mr. Saperstein, do you want to say something?
Yes, Madam Moderator, I do. I'm Lee Saperstein, I'm a member of two town committees, one of which, by the way, we've recommended for dissolution, and one commission. I'm not a member of any town boards. I think, and it's probably, should this pass, we need to look at the definition of a board in the context here. I urge you to look at Town Report, the fifth page, not page five, but the fifth page, which has a table of appointed, and at the bottom it says, "Boards, Commissions, Committees." It makes it clear. This, should it pass, needs to be made clear. But leave that aside, I heard the comment about 10 years. Let me suggest that with, should I follow Dr. Lepre's good advice on diet and exercise? I might be here 10 years from now. I'd be in my 80s, but that's okay. So what I'm really talking about is, for the benefit of the town of Nantucket, I am opposed to this, and I'm going to try and explain why. Term limits are usually seen in executive positions such as president or governor. In these instances, there's a real egalitarian feel for the prevention of dictatorial powers and the provision for regular renewal. If we go back, which I can't, because I was born in President Roosevelt's fourth term, and of course, if you recall, it was shortly after that, that term limits were constitutionally imposed for the executive. But the real issue is, do they apply equally well for legislative and advisory bodies? And I don't think they do. I saw Missouri impose term limits on legislators, and they're still arguing whether or not that was a good idea. I didn't think it was. So let me say, as I wind this down, that term limits have unintended consequences. I thought I got five minutes, but that's okay, I'll end very quickly. They reduce the authority of the electorate, and in the case of appointed bodies, they reduce the authority of the appointing body. They take away the voters' choices. They may reduce, and we've had this discussion, they may reduce the already small number of people who would run for these boards. I think significantly, they limit the institutional memory of the boards, leaving the longest-term memory or history in the hands of the officials or staff. The advisors become the advised. And they reduce the benefit of seniority in the boards, particularly in the election of officers. And so I am opposed to this, and just, it happened here just today. Should we pass this, we will never again applaud 32 years of service to the town of Nantucket. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a clarification on the time, Mr. Saperstein. What happened was, when we called this article, as you recall, I tried to go to you first because you were the person who called it, and then you deferred it, and you went to the amendment, then we gave you five minutes when you spoke to the amendment. That's, that was the problem. That's why I was trying, I mean, this is what happens when people decide, other than me, who speaks when, so. It just doesn't work as well, because it doesn't fit in with my plan, and since I'm the person running it, it just doesn't work out. So, sorry about that. Ms. Oda.
I'd like to respectfully disagree with Mr. DeCosta and Mr. Miller. I served on the Board of the Children's House and the Homestead. There are no term limits for those nonprofits. I moved here in 2000. I served for three terms on the Parks and Recreation Commission, and I learned a little bit as the years went by, and I was a much better commissioner at the end of my term. But then I knew it was time to move on. Now I serve you for the CPC. I'm kind of the new kid on the block. It takes a while to get your feet on the ground, understand the information, do your homework, and really become a substantial member to that board. I am against these term limits. I think that people that are sincere about wanting to serve their town government won't be inhibited by somebody that's been there for a long time, and they'll give it a shot. Look at Tobias. He didn't stop, he tried it twice, and he was successful. So vote this down, it's a bad idea. We have very few people that will serve at all. Keep the people that are working for you very hard. And it's a lot of these gentlemen and ladies right here. Thank you.
Mr. Goodman.
We do have term limits already, they're called elections, and they work very well. We all get a choice at who we want. People can run, and just like it was said a minute ago, Tobias won, he was a newcomer, basically. There is a lot to be said for the experience that a lot of these people have. I doubt that most people could serve on the HDC and be effective unless they'd served at least one term, just getting used to the position. It's very tactical, and I just think that, you know, we're throwing away good people after two terms if we do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Porcher.
Thank you. I've had the pleasure of serving on a work group, a committee, and a board. I currently serve on the Planning Board as an alternate. I sort of took the baton from my late father, Carl F. Porcher, and it's kind of in the genes, so I would respectfully disagree that young people don't have a chance, echoing Ms. Oda, Mr. Goodman, Tobias did well, he kept at it, and Doug Bennett, some years ago, he was a young person with a lot of enthusiasm, and he won Selectman's seat. So my point is, is that we really do have term limits already in the voters and elections, that's my strong feeling, along with Mr. Goodman. And it really does take a little bit of time, as Ms. Williams alluded to. On the Planning Board, I was appointed year, several years ago, to fill a position that was an alternate that had gone to the Finance Committee, Mr. Maury. And I have to say that it's taken some time to learn the ropes, and it takes some time to learn zoning itself. Zoning is like another language that you have to learn to speak, lots of different symbols and zones and everything. So I would urge that you vote this down. I respect the Board of Selectmen sitting here today, who actually put me on for my second term on the Planning Board, but I respectfully disagree with the term limits proposal. Thank you.
Ms. Paradise.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I support this motion. I think, but standing to speak about it took a bit of courage, because I'm speaking to a bunch of people who might disagree with it on town boards, who I might encounter later going through government. I think it takes, culture change takes a window. There's certain kinds of people that can handle going up against incumbents or coming into an established culture, certain kinds of personalities, and you'll get those, it's true, but you won't get all kinds of personalities. I think that if you're encountering the same person on a number of different boards, and just hypothetically, whom you might not agree with, and you're encountering them over and over again, that can really affect your success in the community, whether you're a builder, whoever you are, trying to pass through the planning process of creating a building. So I think culture change is really important when it comes to government, because it can really easily become entrenched. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kopko.
I always find it ironic that it seems like it's the libertarians and small government types that want to push term limits politically. Government's got to not reach into our lives without making decisions about who we may and may not choose to vote for in an election, which is probably one of the most important decisions we have to make. And I, for one, don't favor that kind of big government policy. I think we need to keep our freedoms, we made a great decision this evening, I think, keeping an elected clerk, because we wanted to keep that power for ourselves. And if you want to keep your power for yourself, to vote for the person that you think is best for the job, then you need to vote this down. I was an elected member of the Board of Selectmen for six years. I look across the front of the room, I see a lot of new faces from when I was on the board. There's been some turnover, there's a lot of, a lot of new blood there. I'd like to see a few more women sitting down at the front of the room, would be a good idea. But when I decided to run for Board of Selectmen, all it took was sitting in this room, in town meeting, looking across the front of the room and going, "Wait a minute, they're not so smart, I could do that too." And so I urge all of you to consider the same thing in your own mind, and in the meantime, please vote this down. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go to you, Ms. Wheatley, then I'll come down to you, Ms. Hill-Holgate.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Nancy Wheatley. I would, I would like to say I could vote for this, because while some people have said you have, we have, we have an opportunity to get change at the ballot, at the ballot box. Unfortunately, I think one of our problems, not just on, not just on Nantucket, but in Massachusetts, and in many parts of our country, we don't have candidates who step forward when there are people who have been in a position for a long time. And that bothers me in some of our, for some of our boards, so as I say, I'd like to, I'd like to vote it down. But I'd also like to point out that there's a difference between not-for-profits and the legislative bodies that we have here. I've been on several not-for-profits, and all of the ones that I have been on either already had term limits, or I was instrumental in implementing them during that time. But the difference is that those are generally larger boards, and generally, a lot of what you're doing for the board is fundraising and supporting the organization. So it's very different. We need, we need to have more people running for these positions, and we need to have more people coming to town, to the Board of Selectmen, rather, to be appointed. But unfortunately, I don't think this article is the solution, is what's going to make that happen. Thank you.
Ms. Hill-Holgate.
I wanted to clarify that this was not brought forward by the Board of Selectmen, it was a citizens' article, and respectfully, I don't agree with Mr. DeCosta on this. I think the idea behind it, it sounds good in theory, but I really worry about unintended consequences, and I think there are many that we haven't even fully contemplated with the number of boards and committees that we're discussing. There's not a lot of people stepping forward to fill these positions, and we could end up with vacancies. I have faith in the election process, and I don't think that we need to put further limits on it. I think that more young people should stand up and run. I think I was 28 when I first ran for HDC, and I did serve more than three terms, and, you know, but I did move on, and now there's some new faces on the HDC, and I'm a new face here. And I just, I would really urge that you vote this down, I don't think it's the answer. Thank you.
Mr. Drake.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I am a strong advocate of term limits, and I would urge approval of this motion. I think there's one thing we haven't talked about today, which is inertia. There's inertia sets in with the voters, inertia sets in with the appointing bodies, and unless something really goes off the tracks, they're not going to do anything. They're not going to turn an incumbent out, they're not going to, not reappoint a, an existing member. It just hasn't, that's the way human nature is. And we've seen instances where things have started to go off the tracks, and it's taken too long for anybody to step in and correct them. So I believe we should have term limits. It's three terms, not two, as somebody mentioned before, which should be enough for anybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Way up in the back, Mr. John, oh, Mr. Johnson's moving the question. Okay, so the motion to move the question will end debate. I will take a vote on that, because I have other hands up. If you want to end the debate and go right to a vote on Article 86, you vote yes on the motion to move the question. If you want to continue the debate, vote no. It does require a two-thirds vote. A yes vote will adopt it, a no vote will defeat it. All those in favor of the motion to move the question on Article 86, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
All right. Well, we'll do just a little mini-hand count on that. So all those in favor, I think, I think it's two-thirds, but I'm not 100% sure. So all those in favor of moving the question, please raise your hands and keep your hands raised. But while I have you, as a captive audience with your hands all up in the air, I do want to recognize that some of the young people, which is such a silly term, but some of our younger voters who have come to this meeting and have participated, I think we've seen a fair number, and I'd like to encourage them to continue to come and to continue to bring their fresh ideas and continue to participate, even if the ideas that they bring aren't embraced the first time around. We had Ms. Paradise who spoke tonight, the Alex and Max Perkins were here last night, Mr. Stover, we heard from Tucker Holland, I don't know, everybody seems young to me now, but it does seem like a fair number of young people, and when I know that they went to school with my children, I'm pretty sure they're young. Okay, all those opposed to moving the question on Article 86, raise your hands and keep your hands raised till the tellers have had opportunity to count your vote. Oh, shoot, I was really wrong about that. Okay, and then we're going to go right to a vote on Article 86. Although it's printed in the warrant that this requires a two-thirds vote, I've been told by Town Council that that is an error, and that Article 86 only requires a majority vote. Is that correct, Ms. Goldberg? Okay. Because it's a special act, it just requires a majority vote to pass. I don't think we're going to need it, but let's put it in anyway, because it's so much fun to use. No, 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 never mind. Okay. Yes, 274, no, 14. That was definitely adopted. Okay, that was bad. I should not I should not have doubted myself on that, but that was bad. Okay. So on Article 86, a yes vote will adopt the motion, a no vote will defeat the motion. The motion is as printed in the warrant. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
That motion is not adopted. Excuse me? Okay. Mr. DeCosta would like a hand count, so I'm happy to do that, because I could be wrong. I'm wrong all the time. So all those in favor, all those in favor of the motion on Article 86, raise your hands Okay. All those opposed to the motion, please raise your hands and keep your hands raised until It's Article 93, and then we have to take a vote on Article 94 that was withdrawn. the tellers have had a chance to count your vote. So I know you're going to want to race home or leave, and I really would ask you to stay for Article 93. Article 86, yes, 104, no, 193. The motion is not adopted. Okay. Article 93. Notice, I'm not gloating over that. Starts on page 182, goes to page 183. Finance Committee's motion is moved pursuant to Chapter 90, Section 51F of the Massachusetts General Laws. The Airport Commission is authorized to lease for a term not to exceed 30 years a portion of the following town-owned property located between Milestone and Nobodyer Farm Road and being apportionably unshown on a severs map 69 as parcel 3.1 and known as the Delta Area, subject to Chapter 30B of the Massachusetts General Laws. Is that your motion, Mr. Kelly?
It's a move, Madam Moderator.
Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. Now, Mr. Rafter, did you want to have anything to say about this before I go to the person who called the article? Or it's up to you? Okay. Mr. Rafter?
Thank you, Madam, Madam Moderator. This article simply is asking for an additional 10 years. The Commission, under Chapter 90, currently has the ability to lease land for 20 years. We're looking for 30 years, so that if need be for financing, we'd like to have the 30-year term. The, it's envisioned that this will be for employee housing, and there could be two to three, two-bedroom homes, and possibly a six to eight apartment-style dormitory facility.
Thank you. I'm going to recognize the person who called the article, and please identify yourself for the record once you get the microphone.
Hi, my name is Katie Prowlis. I'm a teacher at the elementary school, and I live at 10A Park Circle, which is one of the condo units that bought this property. I was able to speak with the airport representatives before the meeting, so they were able to clarify a few things for me and answer a couple of questions, but I still thought that it was pertinent to call the article so that we'd be able to vote on it. They did share with me, as the gentleman just said, that they're hoping to build six units at first on the property, but he also shared with me that they potentially could build a dorm, because that's what the FFA wants them to build. So it's unclear what type of building would be built if this was approved. So that's where my concern lies. I also have a clarifying question. If this article does get passed, does it open up the lease of the property beyond employee housing use? This is a five-acre lot. As you can see, it's larger than the Park Circle development, and it's also zoned, I think only part of it commercially. So could there be other uses on that property once this was approved? And then the second question I have is, do, do all the uses that are used on that property have to be airport uses? Or could it be private uses or rented out to private entities? Or, because I just don't know a lot about it, so that's my, my other question.
Thank you. Mr. Drake?
Thank you, Madam, Madam Moderator. Like everybody else on the island, the airport has problems with housing. We've now got firefighters at the airport who are looking to live off-island, because there's no place for them here on the island, and that doesn't help very much when there's a fire. The, what we would like to do with this property, as Mr. Rafter said, is put a small, relatively small number of housing units for, for approximately 10 employees on it. Yes, we have the latitude to do more. If we were to use it for commercial purposes entirely, we would not have any problem at all. Using it for housing is a bit of an issue with the FAA, and while I'm not going to, I don't think it appropriate for me to get into the details of that, because we, they want us to build a dormitory. We don't. So we may have something that looks more like a dormitory that isn't, when we end up with this. But our, our plan, and this is what the Commission has talked about and agreed upon, is to have it for employee housing. They won't let us have anybody else there. They won't even let us have other town employees there, except perhaps, perhaps emergency response, responders. And, but we just still don't know whether it'll be approved, but as, as Mr. Rafter said, in order to get it financed, we don't want to be in the business of building it ourselves, but we don't want to lose the land or the revenue. So our thought is to try to get a developer to do it, and it'll be much more attractive if they had 30-year, a 30-year term than a 20-year term. So I urge your approval of this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Linball?
I was wondering if the entire portion of this parcel is needed to meet the demands that the airport is looking for, or if this property is in an area that can be subdivided to give an offer a smaller portion, and maybe on the opposite side, so that it's not impacting other communities around it.
Mr. Drake?
Again, I'm not in a position at this point to give any guarantees, but our, our idea is to have a small number of units and to have it minimally impact the neighborhood. That's what our goal is.
Okay.
But we're not prepared at this point to commit to any other specifics.
Okay. And we can't go to other land, because that would be outside the scope of the article.
That's correct.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Glidden?
Through you, Madam Moderator, to Mr. Drake. I was, I thought the woman's question was valid about the relationship between the commercial and the residential. Is there, is there a purpose for having commercial there, to get some FAA grant, or if we could just get some clarification, that would be helpful.
This zoning change was approved at town meeting last year, and at that point, our objective was the same, to get it into, as we were going through the master plan process, to get it into a position where we could use it for housing. Yes, we have more flexibility than that, Mr. Glidden, but at this point, we have no intention of using that, again, without guarantees.
Ms. Goldberg, this is an authorization, correct? As opposed to an actual, we're not actually doing it, we're just authorizing it? And who's the lease with?
Could be anyone under 30B.
But who's in char, who's in char, is it the airport that's leasing it out? Yeah. Okay.
Yes, Madam Moderator, it would be the airport, under the provisions of the federal aviation laws.
Okay. But subject to 30B?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Yes. Ms. Benz?
Would you be able to identify what the property is to the north of that, or I guess northeast of that parcel? In other words, above that parcel, is that also vacant land? And could you explain in whose ownership that rests?
Okay. Okay. So I think this area here starts with the old tennis club, and then it's the, the schools. I know, I'm getting there. And then this is the all-land bank here, and then this whole piece up here is...
Airport property.
Airport.
Property. It's all, I think, Lug 2, Mr., Lug 3?
Lug 3.
Lug 3, yes.
This is...
We carved this one piece out for this purpose last year.
Right. So it's all airport. It goes all the way to Milestone. Yeah, I mean, Milestone's basically right there.
Excuse me, are the ball fields, all the playing fields on the airport property?
Yes.
Is that permanent, or do they have the opportunity to convert that to more housing?
Well, it's not affected by this article. Okay. But that's why they call those soccer fields the Delta Field, I think. Right? I think. Okay. So this article requires a majority vote? A yes, a yes vote will adopt the motion of the Finance Committee. A no vote will defeat that motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. That motion is adopted. Okay. So then, just very quickly, Article 94, Finance Committee motion is as printed in the warrant. I'll ask for your consent to waive the reading of that article. Recognize Mr. Kelly for the purpose of making the motion as printed in the warrant. Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. We're just going to go right to a vote. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. That motion is adopted. I will now rec, I don't think, unless anyone thinks I've missed anything, I think we've acted on everything. I will recognize Mr. DeCosta for the purpose of making one final motion, which is the motion to adjourn, or dissolve the meeting.
Motion to dissolve town meeting.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. (applause)